Yes, sir. The December thirteenth, twenty nineteen work session of the Mayor and Board of Alderman is now called to order. We have an agenda and we will follow the agenda as printed. And the next item on the agenda is presentation of Starborough High School Bridge designed by City Engineer Edward Kemp. Ms. Kemp?
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
I have before you, and I'll pass these around, just some conceptual layouts. Just to kind of give a very brief overview, Vice Mayor-
Yes, sir.
-of the project. The end of last year, we applied for some emergency road and bridge funds. These were funds that were generated and allocated as part of the special session back in August of twenty eighteen. And M.D.O.T. received all applications. We applied for all three bridges within the city of Starborough that were deficient. We had one on West Point Road, we had one in Pleasant Acres, and we had this one on Starborough Highway. When I say deficient, they were posted. In other words, they were below the minimum load rating that a typical bridge will accommodate. And those were, you know, throughout the entire state, there were hundreds of those bridges. So it was a very competitive process, and we were very fortunate to receive funding on two of the three bridges. The other, the third one is actually being replaced by the county. So hopefully, in the next year or two, we won't have any substandard bridges within the city limits of Starborough, which is really, really nice. But before you today is the Starborough High School Bridge. The total bid, or the total funding that we have for this project is a little over five hundred thousand dollars, with about four hundred and fifty thousand of that going toward construction. So we, once we got awarded the money, this board approved Neil Schaefer to assist us doing some bridge design and consulting on this project. And after that was done in the spring of this year, we have engaged, we engaged the school district, specifically Dr. Passant, the Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Baggett, the Principal of Starborough High Campus, Mr. McDonald, along with the Facilities Manager for the school. And we had a couple of meetings where we talked about goals of the project, kind of preferences of what they would like to see. And what you have today before you is the final, what we are considering the final design, that is a result of all of those meetings. And I'll talk through a little bit about some of the things that we came up with. First of all, the existing bridge, and you all know or familiar with this area, is an old military metal bridge. It is so narrow, it's almost a single-lane bridge. So traffic essentially has to yield to each other unless they're too small passenger vehicles. Buses do use this route quite often. So one of the requests for the, from the school district is we want to make sure that it can accommodate two-way traffic, specifically two-way bus traffic. And so we did that. We have two-way, two lanes of traffic there that accommodate larger vehicles. The other main component that we, that is different on the current versus the new is we added a pedestrian component to this bridge on the north side. You'll see there, it's going to be separated from the travel lanes of where the vehicles are going to be located by a guardrail. And, you know, right now, there's, most of the student parking is around the athletic complex, around the football field and down closer to the softball field. So a lot of the students are walking across this bridge to get to their parking spaces. In addition to that, during large events such as football games and other athletic events, there's a lot of pedestrians that use this, this bridge to walk across. So we wanted to make sure that that was accommodated in this, in this design, and it's done that. We also made a connection on either end of that pedestrian bridge, or component of the bridge. You can see those sidewalk connections where we tied back to existing by the tennis court. And then what we did is we took a single-lane, well, it was really a two-lane road, and we made it a single-lane road, even though it was really only functioning as a one-way road. And we added a pedestrian lane on the side of that. Alderman Bond, you'll know it's very similar to what we did up here on Long, or Jones Street, Long Street, where we took, you know, one segment of that one-way street and basically divided it with some concrete barriers to separate the vehicles from the pedestrians. That's the same design we're proposing right here.
Okay.
So we'll have that, and then that'll tie into the pedestrian connection to the bridge.
How wide would that be?
Ten feet wide. The last thing that I'll mention on this is we were really sensitive to making sure that not only this bridge was going to be functional, that would accommodate two-way traffic, that would provide safe pedestrian access and connection, but we also wanted to be very aesthetically pleasing. This is going to be right in the center of Starborough High's campus. It would be, you know, visible by all the people who go to school there, but also a lot of visitors who come on our campus there. And so what we have is, you know, I don't believe I have an exhibit here, but we're really paying a lot of close attention to what those guardrails is going to look like. So it's a very aesthetically pleasing guardrail. It has kind of the open guardrail style that you see downtown. It'll be painted black. It'll be very similar to that. There is a small between, the separator between the pedestrian and the vehicular, there's a small concrete wall, but on top of that, it'll have more of a decorative kind of guardrail on that as well. So all in all, we feel like this project will definitely meet the needs, it definitely meet the objectives of the grant. We think it'll be an asset for the, for the school, and we feel like we are within budget as well. This money is a hundred percent funded, and anything above and beyond, obviously, would have to come out of our pocket. So we're very sensitive to make sure we're as close to that budget as we can, so we can get as much as we can out of it, but obviously don't want to go over. So in order to do that, what we did is we built in some financial controls into our proposal package via some alternates. So in case the bids do come in high, for whatever reason, we can also remove some things that will not necessarily make or break the project, but are just additional things that we'd like to do if money is there. So with that, Vice Mayor, I would just turn it back to you and receive any questions anybody might have.
Yes, sir. Excellent job, Ms. Kemp.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Board members, any questions to our City Engineer?
If we do any cutting back, we still going to make it look very presentable to the public, right?
Yes, sir. The bridge itself will not be cut back. The only thing we're proposing to cut back by, on the bond, as you can see, right now, we're tying back to some existing sidewalk here at the, at the tennis course. That'll be the minimum. I mean, we're proposing to do that. But what we would also like to do is cross the street right here and tie the sidewalk back to the sidewalk there that runs right behind the football stadium. So we have included that additional work right there as an alternate. What we're also doing is we're providing a good amount of riprap in the ditch itself, both upstream and downstream, and into the two receiving streams on either side of the downstream side of the bridge. So we have all that included right now in the project, which we think is really good. It'll help from a maintenance standpoint going down the road. But if we, if we do come in high on our pricing, then we can just cut back some of that. But in no way will it affect the visual aesthetic appearance of the bridge itself.
Gentlemen from seven, any more questions?
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Alderman Bond, any questions?
No, sir. I would say, nice job. And I would say, you said you spoke with the Starborough, Starborough High School people. They are all on board with the proposed plan?
They are. We went and met with the, thank you for mentioning that. We went and met with the school board on Monday?
Monday.
Monday, at their regular monthly meeting. We presented it to their board. Of course, their administration is very excited about it. They, they didn't have any questions about it. They approved it. One other thing I think that's unique about this project that I'll mention real quickly too, is you'll see on the west side of the bridge, they are installing some removable bollards, very similar to what we're doing downtown. And they really like that idea, specifically on game day weekends or big events. They'll still allow pedestrians to walk through there, but they can essentially close off the bridge when they want to kind of maintain their campus a little bit tighter. So I think that's a real thing, and the great thing about it is the same design that we have in case we need to interchange out bollards for different type of events. So.
Yes, sir. Ms. Kemp, before we move on, would you please identify your guest or who's working with you on this?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Yes, sir.
This is Kevin Stafford. He is, he has been working closely with us on that. He represents Neil Schaefer.
Yes, sir.
And Neil Schaefer has done all the surveying work. We've also done geotechnical investigations out there. And then they have a bridge division in Jackson, who has been primarily working on the bridge, the structural design components of this. But Kevin is our local kind of liaison representative. Our plan on this is to, to essentially close this road and this bridge the day after school lets out in May. And we haven't worked into our proposal package that will turn it over to the contractor at that date, and then we're expecting the contractor to complete all work by the first of August. It's a pretty tight timeline. We think it's feasible, though. The school district requested that timeline specifically because they do training for their new bus drivers, and it's just, like I said, one of their bus routes, and they need to be practicing a week or two before school starts, so that August the first timeline is what we're looking at. But that, that bridge and this segment of the road that you can see is hatched out here, this will be completely closed during that time period.
Great, Ms. Kemp. Thank, excellent job. Thank you. If no more questions, the next item on our agenda for our work session is presentation of the proposed police restructure plan by Police Chief-elect Donald Mark Baller.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor, this is my current assistant, this is Carol-
She's going to be handing out-
You can have a seat here if you desire, wherever you desire.
These handouts are basically a shorter version of what we've already presented in our packet, sir. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Yes, sir.
The restructuring of the police department. Public safety is an important process. It's something that our officers take very seriously, and so is the importance of being efficient, so is the importance of mission success. If we're not successful, it's not a good thing for the community, it's not a good thing for economic development.
Yes, sir.
So we have been doing, or working on this plan for some time now. A lot of it's been work with interns from Mississippi State, our own supervisors. And I ask for you all to turn to page two. This restructuring has looked to address a couple of major factors that are impacting our department. Every increasing call ratio, overtime hours, and retention. If you look at our overtime hours there, and it's difficult for the chart to clearly reflect, but if you look down at manpower, manpower, we're looking at seven thousand four hundred forty-six overtime hours. This is twenty eighteen review and analysis of overtime hours. A lot of that is coming from within our patrol division. So in order to be the most efficient agency we can possibly be, we did staffing allocations. We realized we're just not big enough within patrol division to effectively handle the call ratios like we need to handle. You can also see one of the second contributing factors, or third there, is special events. That's ever and growing, that's a good thing, but that's something that our department has to be able to manage and handle effectively. So that brings me to the first recommendation of increasing our patrol capabilities. It's going to be a two-part system. One, we currently right now have a special operations group. It's a hybrid of our patrol division. It involves animal control, it involves DUI, it involves motorcycles, and training, and grants, and a supervisor over that unit. What our recommendation is going to be is to reallocate those personnel within other units, specifically for motorcycles crossing over into our patrol division full-time, giving us a motorcycle every day of the week that's operational. The same with our DUI officers, adopted up under a night shift patrol structure, to where we have DUI enforcement every night, a dedicated DUI enforcement, a specialist every night of the week. That's proper for our university community, where we have such a young party atmosphere, and it's essential to our capabilities. We're looking to take grant writing and place that up under our command level. And, and I have this kind of reflected, if you would, reference to three and four pages there. On the grant writing, you see where it's currently up under SOG, and if you go to page four, I put it up at a command level. The reason why that is, grants take organizational effort to be successful, and we've been up or down with our grants. We need to get consistent in our resources, consistent in our timelines, and be able to become more effective in our grants. So by placing that in a command level, sir, that's going to make sure that we have the entire department supporting that operation. Animal control, we have a wonderful vet school here. Both my parents are retired from the city state vet school. I know that our animal control can be more effective with our community outreach. So it made sense to take our animal control unit and place them up under our community-oriented police, where we hope to produce a lot of educational videos, things of that nature, sir. We talked about motorcycle DUI training as a natural component. I look to move our current training sergeant up under our administrative lieutenant, sir. And again, administrative lieutenant operates well within incident command recommendations for management of personnel, so that lieutenant would have three sergeants. And then I'm looking to phase out the current lieutenant position there. When that position was originally created several years ago, he had two tasks. That was going to be to work with DRC committee and to work with grant writing. Both those tasks have been sheltered out, and so there's really not a, other than supervision, there's really not a lot of goals that lieutenant is producing there. So that helps increase my patrol capability. Secondly, our redesigning of patrol zones. The current patrol zones were based on nineteen eighties, and the city is just, obviously, it's grown a lot since then. And for us to be more effective, we need to divide those zones, and that's going to help increase our response time, it's going to give more quality control for having an officer, instead of being stretched at the end to be in an area where they need to be. We talked about special events, and I think this is something that's going to be essential for us, reserve police force. It's been on the books, we're now scheduled or able to start paying a part-time salary to reserve police officers. This is going to be one of our first tasks, and if restructuring, if the mayor, the vice mayor, the board sees fit to approve this, our, our goals are to have this up and operational by April first. That's going to be a time when our spring and our summer events come in. This is going to help us provide a stronger home-life, work-life balance, which is critical for millennial workforce. It's one of our underlying factors for retention, they don't get weekends off. And, and I think that bridging in with a reserve police force will help us there, it's going to help us in our community outreach and our resources within the department, and I think it'll also help us with recruiting as well. So that's, that's something that will help drive our, one of our major contributors to overtime, the assistant chief position. Vice Mayor, it is cruel. It is absolutely crucial for us to have a clarity of chain of command, and right now we don't have that. The past, the current structure between two captains has worked because myself and Captain Stewart are friends, and myself and Captain Troy Outlaw are friends. You're not going to always have that in a modern structure, modern organization, and when bad things happen with tension or through the roof, you need a clarity of chain of command, you need someone that is going to be accountable for the decisions that are made. And that's why I think it's very strong for assistant chief position to be implemented. That's one of them. The second one is our day-to-day goals. We're talking about pivoting and changing an organization for twenty twenty challenges, not from the nineteen eighties, not from the nineteen nineties, but twenty twenty. Assistant chief will help me on the internal management to accomplish those goals, to accomplish those deadlines, to maintain our clear standards, which are critical, I view as our department grows, to make sure that we grow in the right direction. So the assistant chief position is one that I'm allocating for, and this, again, this is a position that we looked internally, we said, okay, we've got a lieutenant position here, we can look, do in the way with, based upon the work structure and assistant chief position, that I feel very strongly, based on my experiences, that, that we need. I've operated under both. I've operated under the two captain positions, without assistant chief and assistant chief, and perhaps as smooth internally as it's ever operated, it's been up under when we had Chief Frank Nichols and Assistant Chief Thomas. It just, there was a clarity of chain of command, there was no confusion in accomplishing those goals. We talked about addressing the high call ratio and everything. Again, besides increasing our patrol capabilities and separating the division, I'm looking to add a records clerk within our customer service area. And the purpose of this records clerk is clear, some of the common complaints I get in the, in the short time that I've been in this position, sir, has been complaints of paperwork, either inconsistency in which it's handed out, reports to the station. We are currently taking officers from the field to come and file reports from the station. Well, that might have been great back in the early nineteen nineties, where calls weren't happening as much. But now, the call ratios are high. It's imperative that we keep people in the field to be able to operate within the field. This records clerk position would allow accountability for cash flow, would be able to be a one-stop shop for our recs or accident reports. Must remember, when people come to the police department, generally, they're coming because a bad event has happened. We don't want to compound that experience by poor service. One of the questions that's been asked, well, don't we currently have dispatchers there doing that? Again, this is a very dangerous job, dangerous position, and I've got dispatchers there that have to constantly monitor the tracking of officers. I'll give you a quick example, sir. One traffic stop or one wreck taking place within the city requires multiple information checks, tracking, logging, and it has to be very serious. That individual is also expected to answer the phone, and now you've got somebody that's had a bad experience to come to the window? That individual's not going to get the best customer service. So that's the reason why we're saying that the records clerk can help us address call ratio and provide a better customer service for coming through that police department, sir. Training, you would look down there. One of the things that, in our analysis, that we realize is our SWAT team has done a great job at training, and part of the restructuring, I look to reboot and set us up where we can train more. We are averaging, if you remove supervisors, one point four years' experience. That's too young, Vice Mayor.
Yes, sir.
That's, that's too young, sir. And we have to train and develop, and train and develop. Now, we've got some great assets, they're in shape, and they're willing to learn, and that's an awesome capability right there. But we've got to be able to put the resources to train them to get to the specialties that they need. So I thought that that was important in there, that that will change and adjust, and you'll see that, you'll see our training get pushed harder and harder. We'll work with the fire department, we'll work with other entities, including other law enforcement, to get that training up. Outside of that, Mr. Ashford, am I missing anything?
Mr. Ashford, come forward, please, sir. The only thing that you haven't mentioned is the transition of the administrative assistant.
Carol Pritchard?
Carol Pritchard.
Yes, sir. Vice Mayor-
Yes, sir.
Ms. Pritchard, you see her today, she's worked with me for several years. She has proven to be what anybody in a position leading this organization like this needs. She's very efficient, she's very effective, she knows how to manage all the paperwork. She currently, in her current taskings, is managing felony investigation files, providing reports. She does so without mistakes. And at our level, as you well know, sir, we can't have mistakes. And so I'm asking for Carol to become my executive assistant with, with the police department in new terms.
Yes, sir. Excellent report, gentlemen. Question from the board members of Alderman Bond?
It's a lot to take in. And so, first of all, first, I would say, I applaud the effort of looking at, try to make us as effective as we can be, and I think this restructuring may be a big part of that. I'm looking forward to getting into a little bit more detail, and that way, when I really have some questions, I can ask you. But I'm looking back at the overtime hours. You addressed two of the three, the big ones, special events and the manpower. The third one, it seems, is dispatch.
Yes, sir.
Does having this new records person, does that have any impact on how the dispatch might work, and how as part of the new restructuring, is that being addressed?
It's been addressed in two fronts. One, and I don't want to speak for Mr. Ashford, but I know that he is evaluating the current pay structure and how they're operating. Secondly, to answer your question, the records clerk will be able to assist with a lot of that overtime, the fact that we're going to cross-train, he'll be there, but a lot of those duties might be able to step down, especially if we have someone that falls sick, anything like that. It can be a stopgap, if you will, that can help carry suit until we pick up a new ship. But I know that we're currently under evaluation for, to review our dispatchers' current hours. Mr. Ashford, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, currently, what we're researching is currently they're working twelve-hour shifts. And so the way that it flows, on one week, they might work sixty hours, and then the next week, they have a shorter week. So we're looking to, looking how we can balance out and see if we can work them eight-hour shifts, you know, potentially on some days, or potentially close down the front office. You know, currently, we have somebody there after hours that come in and take reports. That's when the records clerk will come in. And so right now, we're kind of balancing out, we don't have a final solution for that as yet.
Very good. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
In addition, question, gentlemen, before?
Yes, sir.
Alderman Bond?
Thank you so much for putting a lot of work into this, and I could have been doing a lot of studying on this, and I appreciate it so much. But like Alderman Bond says, you know, it's a lot to take in right now, the questions that you ask, but overall, it looked good to me. You know, but, you know, I'm scared that's a little, looking into it. You done a great job. Thank you so much. Great job looking into this.
Thank you, Al. Thank you, sir.
Very good. No more questions, and we will proceed with our agenda. Discussion of the ten items for the December, this should be December seventeenth, twenty nineteen, legal meeting of the Board of Alderman City of Starborough. We will go through the proposed agenda at this time. Let's turn to page two. The two gentlemen from four and seven, any objections to interdiminishing the Roman number four going on consent?
I'd say, the city attorney, if you-
We've reviewed and corrected, and they should be ready to go.
I'm, I'm good with that.
Okay. Of course, attorney, as to the public hearings, they're set, and, and once we get to the mayor's business, you can address whatever you desire to. So let's move to the mayor's business under one item under A. You want to say something, attorney, on that?
Sure. This is just the call action item to allow the city to send out bids for the demolition of the property at MLK, Dr. Martin Luther King Drive, the Ava Moore Building. So it's just the action item that follows the public hearing.
Right. And explain why we would not put that on consent of attorney?
Well, because it's tagged to the public hearing.
Great.
And so that's why it needs to stay on.
Right. Okay. Airport on page three, I understand from Ms. Harden, at the staff meeting there, having a look at the package, Ms. Harden, there are two applicants for one position?
Yes, sir, there is.
And both have been notified to be here for questions by the board?
Yes, sir, and I will make contact again with him Monday.
Right.
As a reminder.
Very good. Any question about that item? Okay, we're down to planning, two items under planning.
I would say, Dr. Kim, or what is the, what is the issues of a looking at certificate?
Yes, at the last, November fifth, the board reviewed the same, same building. They were proposed to modify the front porch areas. Now, upon the building application, we found that they were also modifying the rear porch, so we had requested them to reapply, and historical commission reviewed it and made the recommendation. the recommendation to the board approve. So, this is the same application, but rear side, not the front side.
I'm fine with that being on consent, but other people may want to hear that.
So, leave it off then? That's okay, off of other people. Okay, and the B, the consent item and objection?
How many, do we have, more than one applicant?
This is just authorized section.
Everyone.
Oh, yeah. Consent.
Okay, that takes us to engineering and the first item also involves a selection committee, so we may need to, let's start with the full board. The first item, what's the will of the two gentlemen that are here, Alderman Walker and Alderman Vaughn?
I think if it's just a consideration to authorize to advertise, I'm okay with that. I'm okay with that being on consent.
But now, requires the development of a selection committee as well.
What is for, is for the, what is this for?
This is for the 182, right, Edward? This is the 182, the bill?
This is the bill grant. So, Alderman Vaughn, this is the, MDOT has a very specific process to go through on selecting a consultant versus to advertise. So, we put out an advertisement like we would do any kind of construction project or bid, asking people to submit if they want to, but once people submit, there will be an internal selection slash review committee that will receive all those different proposals and score those and then we'll bring those to the board, the full board, for consideration of that, of that with a recommendation.
So, we leave that off then?
Okay, we'll leave that off.
Let's leave that off because that one is confusing me because we're going to get a committed to how are these a thousand, how many board members?
The MDOT requirement says anywhere from three to six total is what they, was what their process requires.
So, this is just a committee, that'll be scoring the, just scoring the proposals?
Yeah, it won't have anything to do with input on like what actually is going to be a part of the project. I mean, that's going to come at a later point. This is just to bring somebody on board to help do the design.
Let's leave it off.
Okay. The second item that Mr. Kemp has explained about the SHH's bridge project design?
I'm fine with that going on consent.
Okay, consent of both of those. We'll leave the claims document off on page four. F1, F2, accept some, essentially consent. Fire department, consent?
Consent.
Okay, gentlemen, you have an objection? Let's...
Yes, sir.
Okay, human resources, any objection to, for your consent?
Not just a question. Gary, is this, is this Mr. Pocup's position?
Yes, sir, it is.
I'm, I'm fine with it being on consent.
Okay, parks, there are two items, any objection to both going on consent?
Yes, sir.
Okay, next page, police, there are items one and two, any objection to both, both going on consent?
I'm good with one.
Okay.
I'd say...
The restructuring?
Yeah, let's, I think we wait on the restructuring. Certainly think that I'm going to be for, but give everybody opportunity to see that. It's pretty complex.
I think I'm supporting. Everybody could...
Okay. Our utilities department, there are four items there, any objection to anything going on consent?
Consent.
Consent?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Alderman Vaughn, Alderman Walker, that concludes our review of the agenda. Did I omit anything that you may have noticed or Alderman Vaughn, anything I omitted or?
Yes, sir. How's the mayor doing?
Ms. Al Yutu, the financial director.
I understand she's doing very well. She's, surgery, everything went well, she's doing very well.
Okay, well, according to the agenda, we're down for adjournment. This meeting stands adjourned. This work session stands adjourned.